Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 10th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. We're going to go right off the bat, go into executive session till about 7:00 to conduct strategy session in preparation of negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining session, or contract negotiations concerning the town manager's contract. And then we're also going to vote to approve a couple of executive session minutes. When we come back at 7:00, I'll go over the rest of the agenda. So at this point, Ed, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to conduct strategy sessions and executive session in preparation of negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations concerning the town manager's contract.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Ed O'Leary? Aye.
David, yes.
Mark, yes.
Chris, yes.
See you all at 7:00. Good evening, everybody. Welcome back to the Tuesday, December 10th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Go over the agenda. At 7:00, we have citizens input. 7:05, we are Board of Selectmen approve town manager contract. 7:10, 15-minute parking sign on South Street. 7:25, selectmen's update. 7:30, town managers update. 7:35, assistant town managers update. And then we have a few action items. Leah, would you?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Anybody here for citizens input? Leah? No? Citizens input? No? Okay. 7:05, we're going to move right along. We're going to postpone voting on town manager's contract during executive session. We discussed it, couple little fine tunes, and next week, we'll have it on the agenda. So we'll go right to 7:10, since you're here, Chris. Parking signs on South Street. Chris is coming back, giving us a little update on what you found for the last two weeks.
So over the last two weeks, we had a combined effort between planning, DPW and the Police Department, looking at the parking situation in front of South Street Pizza, Comey's Cleaners, and the liquor store. We, over the two-week period of time, we went roughly 10 times, approximately 10 times throughout that two-week period of time. We varied throughout the day. We did morning, noon, lunchtime, and then evening as well. And the majority of the parking, the vehicles were parked less than 15 minutes, with really the, nearly almost all of them parked less than an hour. Occasionally, there was a car that was, you know, an hour and 10 minutes, an hour and 15 minutes, but at no point did we witness anybody parked all day. There's still some issues with the delivery trucks. While I was, at one time, I saw the delivery truck on the common side, taking up all of those spaces. So we will need to work with the businesses to try to get those delivery trucks either off-hours or in the back of the stores. So that's something that I'll work with Paige, Paige on, and the business owners. I did actually speak with part of what the process was. You know, we talked to the Police Department. We had the officers throughout their shifts, look at those parking spaces, take notice of when vehicles were arriving, when they were leaving, how long they were staying there. I also talked to George, the owner of South Street Pizza. You know, something that we should consider when we do this process is who else is impacted by these decisions. 15-minute parking spaces, while work for some of his customers, do not work for all of his customers. He has lunchtime and dinnertime customers that come in. They order food at the counter. They sit, they wait, you know, by the time they get in their food, you know, they've been there 15 minutes, almost 20 minutes, and then they're taking their time in eating. They're there, you know, 30 to 45 minutes. So he, when I explained to him what we were thinking about, he had concerns about 15-minute parking spaces in front of his business, that would really limit his customers. And really, the, you know, we were looking at the spaces on the, in front of the stores. We were also looking at the three spaces across the street on the common side. And at no point in time during the times that we were there, did we see that those spaces were filled either. So, you know, the cars were moving in and out. They're, in essence, acting as hour-or-less parking, which I think suits the businesses that are there. So, you know, between the Police Chief, myself, and Paige Duncan, I think it's something that we can hold off on adding more signs up there at the time being. As the common develops, as things grow, it is certainly something we can, we can come back to and look at again. But where we just took down all those one-hour parking signs, we're trying to prevent sign clutter from starting right back up.
That's totally understandable, and I'm glad you did, did the survey.
Yep.
This should be the start of a, of a written process.
Right.
Okay? Which is, which is good.
Yeah.
Okay.
I actually created, like, a draft form that maybe we could all look at and give feedback on, because, you know, when, when we were doing the common project, someone would say, "Oh, why'd the sign come?" And everyone was like, "Oh, well, they would ask each other, and no one would really know." And if we have a written process, you know, maybe then we'd know what business requested it, why did they request it, where did they request it. So, I mean, we can pass them around. It's by no means has to be used, but just a starting point, you know, and it has both DPW and police approval on there. I know, I kind of started my own log. I drove by 22 times. I didn't monitor duration or anything. I have them all logged, three times all the spots were full. So similar observations, you know, to Chris. That, and it's not about not supporting the businesses downtown. I think it's about being more supportive and looking at it as a, looking at it as a big picture, versus just being kind of knee-jerk reactive to anecdotal stuff.
With, with that in mind, one of the businesses on, around the common that does have 15-minute parking signs will be closing and relocating. When he does close the business on Bird Street, it may be an appropriate time to remove those 15-minute parking signs, at which time, when a new business comes in, then we can look at that, those three spaces and see if those are warranted, if what the parking needs are over there. But I think at the same time, we're looking at adding, I think we should look at those three spaces on, on Bird Street, and, you know, with permission, when he does relocate, remove those three signs, those signs.
It is interesting that, the Chief made a very good observation. He said that, you know, if we put 15-minute signs there, somebody actually parks longer than 15 minutes, and our guys go by and start tagging people, it's actually, it sends a negative message to the business. So, and, and the reality is that people, once they get tagged, they may not go back the next time. So it's interesting that it can work the other way. Right now, there is no, no real limitation. I can understand, I mean, my general observation was that those are typically 15-minute-type businesses, but occasionally, some of the people at the, particularly at the pizza shop will stay a little longer. And sometimes, people will stay a little longer even at the cleaners, because they're doing, they're getting alterations types of things, may take a little longer than that. So it does happen, but, and your last thing you want to do is, is really send a negative message to customers in the downtown as well. So it is, it is a good, a good process to evaluate.
While we're talking about this, too, can we just look at the ones on Mechanic Street? And they're in front of a business that, I don't know, would have to verify this, but I do not believe is open on Sunday. And, you know, the neighbor has, has brunch on Sunday. So to reserve 15-minute parking spots for a business that's not open that day, you know, may not make sense, so.
I don't think you, you enforce on Sundays anyway, so.
It says nine to nine every day. I went and looked.
Every day?
Yeah, the old signs used to say, "One-hour parking, except Sundays," so maybe that could be a good alternative, nine to nine, except Sundays, you know, if a business isn't open that day.
We have Saturdays and Sundays, so, I mean, except weekends.
Yeah. We can certainly look at that. That's, that's an easy one.
Yeah.
I think it was excellent that we did this, though, just to really have a good eye on, you know, I'm walking there all the time, too, so I'm always, I didn't have my notebook. I didn't.
It's not 22 times?
I don't know how many.
On my phone.
And it did seem to move, you know, quite a bit, cars coming and going. My thought was coming up with a policy, and I think Leah just saved you guys a heck of a lot of time, coming up with her own little one right here, which I think is great, because that was going to be my suggestion, is let's come up with something. So maybe we'll pass this around, maybe get, get some feedback from Paige. You came in late, but Leah already drafted a policy.
Not a policy, just a form.
A form, to fill out if there is an issue, if a business owner says, you know, we need to look at it some more, to fill that out. So I think that's great.
We said, how many times do we say, "What's the rationale for this sign?" Remember when we were looking at Uptown and, you know, no one knew kind of why? So this would give us that history down the road if we went to look back.
Any other thoughts?
No, no. Good, good work.
Yeah, well, thank, thank you for your, all your feedback, and, and everybody, take one of these to take a look.
I can email it around.
And also, I don't know how to go about getting, but.
Oh, sorry, Paige.
Come up to the microphone, ma'am.
Sorry, it's late. Ma'am.
I was meeting with the AdCom Chairman. I didn't know you guys started early.
We're moving right along.
I know. I was going to mention, I think I mentioned it last time, too, is we should take a look at the forms for when you sign up for the common, to make sure that we put a note there that there's no long-term parking in those prime spaces, you know. I don't know what the current thing says. It might already cover it, but we should just make sure that, you know, vendors and the like come to one of these parking lots, or sort of a more perimeter parking space than directly around.
The JCs do do a good job of getting the vendors out of there, but, I mean, if there's a big craft fair, you know, a citizen might park there for three-quarters of the day.
Right, right, right. You can't control visitors, but you can control sort of the vendors and the people that sign up. So that's, I think, from your.
The JCs have a really good process of.
Okay, that's good.
We get license plates and a lot, so.
Chief Gray, anything from the police side regarding this?
No, I'm, when I apologize for being late, I was at the high school for the sports presentation, so.
You guys have absolutely nothing else to do.
I know. Tuesday night's a busy night.
To the kids, it was fantastic. So Paige and Chris, we've been communicating, so I've been sending out the offices, assigning them during what we consider those prime hot hours between like 1, 11 and 1, 11, and then between 5 and 7, when we feel like it could be the biggest impact on some of the businesses. The officers went out there, they made observations. They, some of them counted cars, gave me times, and they did have several instances where cars stayed longer than 15 minutes, but they were in the businesses there. So I actually forward all the emails for everybody to review and look at, and we don't see, and you guys have all the, we don't really see the, like, the numbers mean something. They really, 22 times, right there, it means something.
My kids love a really fun game. They'd be like, "Mom, give me your phone, what time is it?" And lock.
So I, I support, so I support Chris and Paige and their thought process.
No rush to.
No, it's, it's, let's take it slow, and.
Okay.
But we want to protect the customers, you know.
For sure. All right, awesome. Thank you very much, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we willing at this point to make a motion? I don't think we have to. I think we'll just wait and see, taking their suggestions.
Additional feedback.
Still going with.
Well, we're just taking no action.
Right, no action. Selectmen's update. Anybody? Before I get to.
No.
Just was emailed to remind everybody, townspeople, that they'll be caroling uptown on the common Thursday, 12:19 at 6:00 PM, and all is welcome. All are welcome. Anybody else? Aye?
Great.
Town manager's update.
Thank you. So I, just a couple things, and Chris is here with his family, so I want to just take the opportunity. We haven't officially given him a letter to do this, but, but, Chris is our candidate of choice to be the next DPW Director for the town, so congratulations to Chris.
That's great, thank you.
We had a good conversation this afternoon, actually, earlier this morning, and then we still got some details to work out, but, but he clearly is, there was a very good process that went, I know that Dave participated in that, and, you know, we had some really good candidates. We, 27 candidates in all, some really highly talented people. So Chris should take solace in knowing that, that he competed at a really high level, and it's good, it's good that we have people like him amongst us, and now we're going to continue to keep, continue to retain, retain him in a higher level than where he currently is at. And so this is a career move for him, so I'm really glad that we're able to do that with him. I continue to say this to, I said this to him, I'll say it to everyone else, that he's clearly proven himself in this organization. I think he's done a great job. I think he's had a great opportunity to work with one of the best in the business, in Roger Hill. And I think that having that ability to work under that tutelage during that period of time has, has made him a better candidate for this job, and, and that value is certainly going to be retained now in a really positive way. So, so congratulations to him for, for doing that, and for being here, and continuing to stay amongst us.
Can I just add a couple things to that? I was part of the, the search committee, and there were some impressive resumes. There was a couple, a couple gentlemen that interviewed pretty well. It was interesting, knowing Chris for, for the time that I've been on the board, to see the growth, and see, he's got a little bit of Roger in him now, which is, don't take that the wrong way.
Not a bad thing.
It's actually, it's actually a good thing, because Roger's one of the smartest people I've, I've met in, in that area. And, you know, one of, one of the things you ask the applicants is, where would you like to see, where would you like to take, take the department? And Chris had, had a very interesting take on it. He's not looking to change it, he's looking to make it better. To build on the stuff that, that Chris has, has started and Roger implemented, he just wants to make it better. And that, and to me, that, that really, that really made a difference, not to mention his education. He's got a master's in, in civil engineering, he's a registered engineer. The amount of work that he does in-house saves the town a ton of money. So I, you know, he, he was definitely the, the leader at the end, so congratulations and well done.
Great. Yeah. Now you get to speak, say a speech if you want.
I just want to say thank you. You know, the last six years have been amazing to learn from Roger, to see his management style, and learn the engineering surveying from him over the last six years, and continue that growth professionally on my end. And I look forward to, to continuing what he started, and kind of bringing it to the next level for the town of Foxborough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely a good hire.
And congratulations to your family, too, for that.
Thank you.
When, when Chris talks about the next level, he actually defined part of what that next level is in his interview. And we normally don't talk about what happens in interviews outside of the interview, you know, the room and the panel, but I think it's appropriate to point out some of the high standards that he's, you know, it's, it's tough to go higher than, than where the Department of Public works in Foxborough is right now. But he said, for one, he wants to take the DPW to an accredited level, which is a major undertaking, but that's something he'd like to do. So we've got, first of all, I want to say that going through this process, I was not convinced that, that the inside talent was, was, you know, the best. Certainly, somebody with a master's or a, you know, a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering, and a, and a master's degree in, in civil engineering, both from West Polytech, and the experience he's had, you know, as a town engineer in Westwood and here, you know, put him up there, but the, the, on paper, credentials that we had coming in were incredible. So he was competing, like Bill said, at a very high level. You know, in addition to those things, he's, as he mentions, you know, he says, "He showed up in a suit," and we actually took wages. Is he going to be in a suit? Or jeans? Because I'd never seen him in a.
Maybe the last time we see that, by the way.
Never seen him in a suit before. He did show up in a, in a suit, looking really sharp, but he said, you know, "I'm, I'm really comfortable in my boots, almost as comfortable as, as Roger Hill." But he had letters of recommendation from, from people who work for him, which is, says a lot. But, but he rose, and I had to really look at, you know, take an objective view at, you know, through the process, and he did rise through the process above some really, really well-qualified people. Did great. To me, the things that stood out, you know, after he rose above that crowd was, he said, "I came here as an engineer, was quiet, and I learned that people needed to learn things. People needed to understand what goes into the roadways, into our infrastructure, what happens behind the scenes in DPW." So I had to speak up at the bus stop, at the IGO school, at my kids' events, at baseball, and let them know, "This is what goes on. This is where your money is, is going into infrastructure." And he said, "In that process, I went from being a quiet engineer to someone who wasn't afraid to speak up as a leader." And he was very clear about, "I want to be a DPW leader here in Foxborough and in my field. And I want to recognize the good things that go on in DPW, because they really are first responders." Because, you know, like, like, you know, Al Truax used to say, you know, "The cruisers and the ambulances and the, and the fire trucks don't get anywhere until the roads are plowed and cleared and constructed." So my hat's off to Chris, competing at a very, very high level, and, and convincing me that he was the candidate of choice. So congratulations.
Thank you.
So it's interesting that, that Chris wants to be accredited, because he doesn't get in line, right, with the police department and the fighter department, because they would have did the same thing, so whoever gets there first will be, will win the prize, right? So, so I appreciate all the efforts collectively of the departments in doing that, because that just takes us to the professional level that this community really, I think, appreciates in the level of work that they do. So thank you for thinking about that.
There's only, there's only two in Massachusetts, right?
There's only two in Massachusetts right now. For fine and licensed, I think.
So it's a good, good goal to have in front of you. So a couple other things to talk about. First of all, we, we mentioned the, the fact that we're going to work on a vision statement, and I think we should have this on the agenda for the next meeting, for discussion, because it was unfortunate, just, it slipped our, slipped our agenda for tonight, but, but we'll, we'll definitely have it on for discussion at the next meeting, because it's a really important part of this budget process, so we'll have that out there. The town manager's office has been working on one as well, so what we've been doing amongst our own staff members, and we had those conversations this week about that, so we'll continue to, to work on that line, so maybe we'll time, time ours to be consistent with yours in that respect. All right? Some unfortunate news to, to convey to you was that we received notification this afternoon that the fire station in the funeral home project has been appealed, decision from the fire, from the Board of, from the planning board has been appealed. So we don't know what that means at this term, at this point in terms of timing, but we are going to, going to have a conversation with council next Monday, I believe, to have, to find out how, what that all means, and how, and what kind of a strategy we have to invoke to address that. So we will certainly keep you posted on, on that piece of information as it comes forward. Some really good news to report, though, is that, is that we have, well, first of all, we, we received a couple grants, as you know. We received a $710,000 grant, $708,000 grant this past week, from the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, was here in person, well, this past week, to present it to us. It was a grant that, actually, Chris and, and Environmental Partners and Roger Hill had worked on. They had, they received a, a grant to design the, the work to the West Street Dam last year. This year, they received the, the construction piece, which was worth about $708,000. It was one of the larger grants that was actually given out by the, the Secretary, and that's why she actually chose this location, for all the grants that were issued, she, she gave it to us as being one of the largest grants that were issued in the state. So congratulations to the efforts of, of that department, again, for, for doing such a great job. Another important point is that we received a $10,000 grant from the, from Maya for a DPW safety trailer, which will now be, be able to purchase and use for, bring out to various work sites, have all the cones and all the appropriate signage that's necessary for, for doing emergency-type jobs and emergency-type repairs for water, water or sewer-type failures that need to be addressed. So we're glad to be able to report that that was awarded this past week as well. On top of that, the town of Foxborough was, was, on police report, was selected as, as the most improved wellness site in, of all the Maya communities throughout the state. And that award will be given to us at the annual meeting in Boston in January. So we see that, that call, got that call this afternoon, and congratulations to, to the folks that are sitting up here tonight, that have done a terrific job of, of working on that effort, and along with our employees, who have, who have been very active in participating in those programs. So congratulations to everyone for that effort. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that we are working on the budget, and we've, we, the deadline is this Friday for getting all the budgets submitted, so working with the finance department very closely to get that information up and, up and loaded into the system, so we can actually see where we stand, and then we'll start the budget process formally with, with hearings, internal hearings, and then presenting the documents as we laid them out to you previously. And finally, yesterday, both Doc and I had the pleasure of, of attending the, the grand opening and the ribbon-cutting of the new soccer facility, soccer training facility at Gillette Stadium, built in, in the back area behind the Bass Pro Shop. There's a new world-class training facility that was, that was built by the craft organization. And if you get an opportunity to go up there at some point, if you want to get a tour, we'll make, let us know, and we'll try to make arrangements for you to see it. It is, is really something to see. It really was really, really well done. First classes they typically do in building facilities for that, for that particular campus, and, and I, I got to tell you, it was, it was something to really see, first, first time out of the gate.
Absolutely beautiful.
Yeah, really, really well done.
I didn't realize there was that much space behind, coming around the corner.
Yeah, it is deceiving, yeah, it's very deceiving.
Then all of a sudden, you see this big, beautiful Bass facility, and.
I believe they call it bucolic area, which is really what it was, because it's, it's sort of tucked away, and, I mean, there is, there are some neighbors that are there, but they, they used certain types of construction methods to protect the neighbors as much as they could with, with, by shielding them, and they did a really nice job of doing that, so hats off to them for, again, for making the investment.
The old emergency exit and entrance.
Out the back.
Yeah, out the back, but a beautiful facility.
Yeah, really well done. And so, and it's, it's also another great sign that they're, they're making investments to stay here in this area, and I think that's a, that's a really positive indication of the relationship that we have, so I'm really, really pleased to see that. I think that covers it, and.
Also, don't you do, sorry, do more.
Oh, yes, thank you. I mean, most, one of the most obvious things I can, is introduce Christina Metcalf, who is our new Community Information Specialist, taking over for Amanda, who left us about two months ago now. And so want to welcome Christina to the staff. She's been a great addition, and will be a great addition as well. She has, she comes to us from the library, where she was the administrative assistant to the, to the director for, for several, what, three years, yeah? About three years?
Almost a year.
Almost three years, so. But she's not only familiar with the organization and how we do things here in Foxborough, but has a terrific background in, in, in social media, in ways to communicate, and already starting to work on ways that we can develop some strategies for communicating throughout the community. So we're happy to have her, and, and, and happy to put it to work right away. So thank, thanks Christina for being here and joining us.
So I want to build on what Bill was saying about the, about the most progress in a wellness program that we were just notified about today, and I particularly want to point out several people who are instrumental in leading that, that program. So to my left, you've just been introduced to our new Community Information Specialist, and also the Chair of the Town Wellness Committee. So Christina, as well as Special Education Teacher Anne Farrell, and Assistant Treasurer Collective Veronica Harvey, led the 14-employee committee that has really taken charge, brought us more programs, and increased the, the level of wellness and wellness programs in the town, which are beneficial to, to the residents and the employees. So I'm really grateful to Christina, Veronica, and Anne for leading that effort over the past year, and I know they'll continue to do that over the next year. The only other two things I have is that we, today, we just closed out the, the recruitment, the advertisement program for Christina's replacement at the library, so over the next several weeks, we'll, we'll start to go through those resumes and move into the interview phase after the holidays. And, and Chris's, Chris Gallagher's promotion, or imminent promotion to DPW Director, will create a, a new opening for the town engineer, so I'll be meeting with Chris over the next week to look at his job description, add my own, you know, finesse to that, and we'll put that. we'll put that out for recruitment as well. So that's all I have.
Okay, great.
First item is an approval of the 2020 licenses concerning different eating establishments, liquor establishments, et cetera.
Yeah, these are the annual license renewals. We're just going to do them as a, as a group, right, as we usually do.
Any comments?
Second. I didn't know if that was the motion.
Yeah.
That's a motion. All those in favor?
Reappointment of child sexual abuse awareness committee members for a three-year term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two. Make a motion to reappoint child sexual abuse awareness committee members for a three-year term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Reappointment of the agricultural commission members for a three-year term expiring twelve fourteen twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Make a motion, make a motion to approve the reappointment of the agricultural commission members for a three-year term expiring twelve fourteen twenty twenty-two.
Still second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Veteran services, an acceptance of a gift donation of a hundred dollars. Make a motion to accept a gift donation of a hundred dollars to the veteran services department from the American Legion Post ninety-three in memory of Arthur Bonin Jr.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Acceptance of a gift donation of five hundred dollars to the veteran services department. I make a motion to accept a gift donation of five hundred dollars to the veteran services department from Prime Motor Group in memory of Arthur Bonin Jr.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Acceptance of a gift donation of five hundred to the Foxborough Historical Commission Cemetery Fund from the Foxborough Federal Savings Bank. I make a motion to accept a gift donation of five hundred dollars to the Foxborough Historical Commission Cemetery Fund from the Foxborough Federal Savings Bank.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Acceptance of a gift donation of seven hundred and thirty dollars to the Council on Aging and Human Services from the Fidelity Charitable Donations and Linda and Paul Ushame of Walpole in memory of Ray Malley. Motion to accept a gift donation of seven hundred and thirty dollars to the Council on Aging and Human Services from Fidelity Charitable Donations and Linda and Paul Ushame of Walpole.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I have a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Good night, everybody.